Welcome, everyone. It is Wednesday, July 28, 2021. This is a meeting of the Committee of the Whole for the Bloomington Common Council. We have one item on our agenda tonight, and that would be Appropriation Ordinance 2101 to appropriate from the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, IFA Coronavirus Relief, General Fund, and Parks Recreation General Fund, expenditures for purposes that fulfill the intent of the American Rescue Plan Act in aid of the City of Bloomington's recovery from the effects of the COVID-19 emergency. I believe we have Ms. Guthrie and Mr. Underwood with us tonight.
We do, but I'm going to ask Deputy Mayor Don Griffin to speak first, and he's going to introduce somebody as well, so.
Great, thank you. And Mr. Griffin, there you are.
Hey, here I am.
Mr. Griffin, welcome. Please go ahead.
Good evening. I'm Deputy Mayor Don Griffin, and I'm here to speak briefly about Appropriations Ordinance 21-0. This ordinance would appropriate funds for expenditure in 2021 from the ARPA, the ARP Coronavirus Local Fiscal Recovery Fund, which the council established earlier this year, and make additional appropriations from the IFA Relief Fund, which holds our CARES Act distribution from the state of Indiana. The ordinance also includes appropriations from the General Fund and the Parks and Recreational General Fund. We discussed the substance of this proposed appropriation at the council meeting last Wednesday, when we requested approval of the ARPA plan, which is required by the State Board of Accounts. We thank you for approving the plan. In a few minutes, Corporation Counsel Philippa Guthrie will make comments about the plan and the ordinance, and then Controller Jeff Underwood will be providing more details on the appropriations. But first, I want to highlight one proposed appropriation from the General Fund. It's $30,000 for a grant to the MCCSC to cover COVID costs in our schools. The reason is that we have Superintendent Dr. Jeff Oswald with us for the beginning of the meeting tonight, and I'd like to have him say a few words about how these funds will be used. I'd like to introduce the superintendent.
Hello, everyone. Can you hear me okay?
Yes, welcome. Please go ahead and state your name for the record.
Hi, Jeff Housewell, Superintendent of Monroe County Community School Corporation.
Welcome. Good to have you with us.
I'll have it die hard.
Please go ahead. Welcome.
I just simply want to thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight, Deputy Mayor. Griffin, I really appreciate it. He was at the meeting where I was hired, introduced himself, and said, "You're going to love Bloomington. You're going to love Monroe County." It's an incredibly welcoming, inclusive place, and I've already learned that in the short time I've been here. Of course, Mayor Hamilton reached out to me very quickly, and it was just the excitement in his voice and the things going on in the Bloomington community. And he said, "You absolutely have to introduce yourself to the council." He said, "They're very forward-thinking. They're focused on quality of place, and of course, they care about public education." He sounded like my people. So I just want you to know that while I have not formally had the opportunity to introduce myself, I've heard great things, and I really appreciate the leadership that you are showing, especially during COVID and during this pandemic, but clearly before that time, and I see the forward-thinking nature of the council, and I just give kudos to all the work you're doing, especially during these tough times. And with that, I do want to talk briefly about what we have requested and what Mayor Hamilton has worked with you to hopefully provide. Obviously, our number-one focus right now is increasing the rates of vaccination amongst our staff and our student body. I know that you're having similar conversations in the community. We know that it's probably the singular most important step in helping to stop the spread. We have temporary measures in place, as you're well aware, such as our mask requirements and other distancing features. However, we've really undertaken a responsibility to simply get out the word and encourage people to get vaccinated. You may have heard last night, we were able to use some of our stimulus funds to provide a stipend to all of our staff members who show documentation of having the vaccination by September 10. Those were allowances within the stimulus fund that we were able to do. One of the things we did not have allowances for or permission for was more focused on the community, and that would be our student body. And so we reached out to Mayor Hamilton and asked if there had been any way that you could provide some funds for us to create an incentive program or a drawing for our student body, so that we could simply start the process of encouraging incentivizing vaccines for our student body when school resumes. We're really excited about it. We've worked all the details. It's going to be managed by the foundation. We have donors that are contributing, but of course, the largest donor would be the City of Bloomington. And so we see that as a very forward-thinking opportunity, and we're excited to work with you, to make some formal announcements on what that will look like, and then ultimately provide data that show how initiatives such as this can increase the vaccination rates for our student body.
Great.
And I could talk all night, but of course, Mayor Hamilton warned me. So I can always, two hours to watch 60 minutes, so I will keep it brief. But I'm open for any questions you have, and I do sincerely thank you for the opportunity to speak to you tonight.
No, it's good to have you with us. What is the council's will? Are there questions for Deputy Mayor Griffin or for Mr. Housewell? Councilmember Sims, and then Councilmember Sandberg.
No questions, but I haven't had a chance to personally welcome you to Bloomington, and so glad that things are going as you've been told by many of us that live already. So welcome. Look forward to working with you in the future.
Well, thank you so much, and I feel the same way about you. I look forward to meeting all of you individually, personally, and collectively as a group. And you guys have had significant challenges before you, and I think you're coming out of it stronger and probably further ahead than a lot of cities are. So kudos to you, and keep your vision and focus on health and safety and quality of place, and I think that we'll go far together. But I really appreciate the kind words, Councilmember Sims.
Great. Thank you. Let's go to Councilmember Sandberg, then Councilmember Smith.
Thank you. I echo that welcome, and I certainly applaud any and all efforts to incentivize to the best of our ability. And even my question has to do with, have you or your foundation or your board thought about getting more restrictive about it and actually mandates, rather than incentive programs? Does that come up in your discussions?
Right now, we have not had a conversation about mandating vaccines because we are just awaiting the final approval of FDA, of course, and more legal understanding of what the options are as employees and as students. Students have, of course, a right to attend K-12 public education, so I think there would be some legal challenges with that. But we're starting with vaccinations, and really, of course, we're keeping our mask mandate for all students and just focused on those pieces right now. I think that down the road, and vaccinations have been around for a long time. So it'll be interesting to see where the leadership of our community, the state, and federal government goes in terms of the allowances associated with that. I think that's a really good question. I, of course, don't have an answer to it, but I understand your desires.
Then if that is legally a challenge, an obstacle, what do the incentives look like for the students? Would it be a stipend to their families, similar to the stipend that would be provided for that?
No, right now, we're looking at, we're looking at a larger stipend as more of a drawing associated with scholarships and cars.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, larger drawings, a more significant nature to really incentivize something really unique that we've not heard about in Indiana, and sort of like some of the university models where they're giving away some tuition, some large drawings. We really believe that can excite the students in a different way than maybe everyone getting a smaller amount. So we've had some significant donations towards that, so we're excited about that opportunity. I don't know if I can make them go to IU, but we can at least have that conversation.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Councilmember Smith.
Hi, Mr. Oswald. Did I pronounce your name correctly?
Yeah, it's perfect.
Okay, well, welcome.
I've been called worse.
Well, welcome to Bloomington, and I'm going to follow up on Councilmember Sandberg's question. So tell me, what was the incentive for the teachers? And then I suppose there are details of the student incentives that you're not ready to release, or you are. If you could fill us in a little bit more.
I would be glad to. So last night, we passed a resolution for all of our benefited employees, as well as other employees who worked a certain number of days last year, and it is to basically provide a stipend to them as a form of reimbursement for the time and effort associated with getting the vaccine. We were very strict, and we used very carefully the lines within Esser. We do have probably more limitations than some entities do, but the board last night passed a resolution to that effect, and all employees who are vaccinated by September 10 will be provided $1,000. So that's approximately $1.4 to $1.6 million. And in terms of the student lottery, what we're doing is we're using, we already have other donations, but we're using this gift as really a springboard to try to get as many donations as we can. So how the specific prizes and drawings and things will work out, we've got about two weeks to finalize that, to really start the school year and just have a specific plan. Of course, we're working on getting as many donations as we can to really get the students excited and continue to send that message to our students of the importance of vaccination, to help our community and to help keep our students safe and our staff safe as well. So those are both great questions, and I appreciate the follow-up, and I look forward to meeting you as well.
Well, thank you very much, and of course, we totally support more vaccinations is better. So thank you very much.
Oh, thank you.
Additional questions for Mr. Housewell? Councilmember Piedmont Smith.
Yes, thank you, and thank you, Mr. Housewell, for coming today. Did I hear you right that some of the incentives will be cars?
Yeah, with your donations, we're working on scholarships, but we also are working with a dealership who is willing to provide automobiles. They have some options to opt into scholarships as well, but we wanted to put something pretty large and significant out there to really drive home the excitement behind these efforts.
And everybody, the students, I guess, would be those 12 and older? Is that the category at this time?
That particular part of the drawing would be for high school students, and working with the families, so that, again, we have choices available for them.
So for the students that are too young to drive and also are not interested in perhaps post-secondary education, are there other options that you're weighing to incentivize those students?
Yes, yeah, we're kind of listing that, the people value. So those are all great questions. So, yeah, absolutely.
All right, thank you.
The point is, we'll make sure we go out of our way to provide a list of options, so that there isn't somebody that wins the large prize, if you will, and finds none of that stuff useful. So your point is well made, on making sure that we are basically accommodating all our students to provide something that's useful to them.
Oh, yeah, we want to incentivize the 10-year-olds and their parents as well.
Right.
So they.
That's right. And this particular, yeah, this particular initiative is starting with the high school, and then we're trying to have a parallel conversation with the middle-school students as we get more and more of those students vaccinated. So we're really talking about the high school population right now. Yeah, I completely agree.
All right, thank you.
Yeah.
Additional round-one questions or follow-ups or any? If not, I'll take a crack at it. Okay, wow, on the cars, school has clearly gotten a lot cooler since I was there, and I had that same question. So thank you, Councilmember Piedmont Smith, for saying that. I wonder, you know, given the emphasis and given the many conversations we've had about encouraging cycling and walking, has there been any thought to bikes as incentives?
Yeah, you guys are spoiling all my secrets, but we are having conversations at the middle level and other levels as well about some of those prizes. Absolutely. I can't keep any secrets with you. I already figured that out, so I'm just going to quit trying.
Okay, well, I won't draw you into any more.
No, no, it's okay. It's really for a great cost, so don't make any apologies.
Okay, and then just a more general question. I know that when it comes to pandemics, we have an N of one. This is it. But do you have any particular goals in mind or measures of success?
I'm sorry, related to?
Related, is there a percentage by which you would like to see the vaccine rate increase, for example? Or do you have some benchmark in mind?
So to answer that question, I had a follow-up with a few people in the medical profession. I said, "What is the goal of this herd immunity?" We've heard several numbers thrown out, and it's moved around from 60 to 70, 75 to 80. And so I don't believe I've heard where there's a solidified number that's recommended. But our goal, honestly, through this and through all of our initiatives, is to continue to make sure that not only are vaccination rates in a sample size of a school above the state, as well as the community average, but to do that significantly. So personally, we're looking at that 70-75% range as a minimal goal and continue to push those numbers higher. I mean, we would like that within the universe, all of our schools, individually and collectively, vaccination rates surpass that of Monroe County and of the state. So maybe we'll make a little contest.
Thank you for that. Additional questions?
Great question.
Deputy Mayor or for Mr. Housewell? Okay, seeing none. Thank you so much for being with us.
This is so enjoyable. Next time, I'll ask for more money.
You'd be one of many. Welcome.
Really? Wait, I thought, oh, man, I thought most people came to you offering you money.
All the time. So thank you so much.
Thanks for all you do. I really appreciate it. And thanks for the opportunity for the introduction. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Okay.
So with that, Deputy Mayor Griffin, anything else?
No, let's continue with the show.
Okay, so let's go to Ms. Guthrie, I believe.
Yes, thank you. Boy, it does make me want to go back to high school and win a car, I'll tell you that. I never thought I'd say I'd want to go back to high school. So I'm here to talk about the ordinance. As you all will recall, last week, you approved the plan that's associated with the ordinance, and we appreciate that very much. This is now the Appropriations Ordinance, and there are actually three parts to it. So the first part is the appropriations we're requesting from the ARP Fund, which is the fund that you set up to receive the distributions from the ARPA. And all of the proposed or the requested appropriations, the amounts are listed in there. They are identical to what you approved in the plan last week, but I do want to make one note, which is the last amount, which is $75,000 for digital equity grants, we will be asking that you consider an amendment to that on August 18 when you vote on this, because it really shouldn't say grants. It should say investments, to make it equivalent to what you approved in the plan. So it's a very simple amendment, and I'm hoping, I assume, that you won't have any problem with that. The second portion of the ordinance has appropriations from the Indiana Finance Authority Coronavirus Relief Fund, which is a mouthful, but it is simplified to what the fund into which the CARES Act distributions were deposited. And these appropriations are $340,000 to Information and Technology Services, Community and Family Resources, CFRD, and Facilities Maintenance in the General Fund. So this is a requested appropriation from the IFA Fund to be transferred to the General Fund, and then $260,000 to the Parks and Recreation Fund, also, again, appropriated from the IFA Fund and then deposited in the Parks and Recreation Fund. These are primarily, almost exclusively, related to coronavirus recovery. So ITS spent a lot of money getting us all in shape to work remotely, or a lot of us. So, and CFRD is actually the grant to Monroe County Schools. And then Parks Fund is for various things. One or two of the items in the Going to the Parks Fund are not necessarily directly COVID-related, although they're kind of related, but the CARES Act funds may be used for a broad swath of city functions. There was no limitation to that reimbursement, that it must be tied to COVID, unlike, for example, the ARPA Fund. So I think that's all I need to say right now, and I'm happy to answer questions. And Jeff Underwood is here. I don't know if he would like to add anything, but he is here.
Underwood?
Good evening. Jeff Underwood, City Controller. Just quickly add, the two differences between the ARPA funds and the CARES money is, as you know, the current guidance through the State Board of Accounts is that money in the ARPA funds has to be appropriated and spent out of that fund. So essentially, you just see the one appropriation. With the CARES money, you actually appropriated it out of the CARES fund that we had to establish to receive all the money into, and then it gets moved into the two funds that we're talking about tonight, the City's General Fund, the Parks General Fund. And then you have to appropriate the use of that back out. And Corporation Counsel Guthrie covered what those were for, and we have other department heads here that can answer questions as well. And just additional information, you know, we primarily talked last week about ARPA, but as a reminder, we got about $2.8 million in care funding. We spent about $620,000 of that last year, and that leaves us about $2.14 million. So we're going to appropriate another $600,000 tonight with your blessing, on the 18th, and then there may be additional appropriations either with the budget or in the fall. We have had other expenditures COVID-related, but at this point, they weren't significant enough for us to add into this. Be happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Let's come to Council for questions. Councilmember Sims, and then Councilmember Rollin.
Thank you. To start off, my question has to do with the $700,000 proposal to CBU for the lead-based service lines. And specifically, what I'm interested in is the line where the support will be offered as a loan or credit program, the CBU, with potential future reimbursement. And there was also a mention of possible funding through a future federal infrastructure program. So I guess the first thing I want to know is, do we have the details on whether that is a loan, where it's credit? What are some of the payback schedule? And secondly, CBU has some significant plans with regard to infrastructure and maintenance as we move forward. So I just want to make sure that we're in a position to pay back any loans or something from CBU, looking at some of the longer-term plans that CBU has, that makes sense.
Yes, I'll jump in and say that we're structuring this as a grant that can be reimbursed by CBU. So there's no repayment schedule put together. Vic can talk about the fact that there's going to be additional funds, but we're structuring it so it'll be sent to CBU, spent out of this fund as a grant that may be reimbursed if funds become available. Now, let Vic speak now.
Yes, Vic Kelson, Utilities Director. This is a little bit complicated, but what we're doing, as Mr. Underwood said, is this is a grant that may be repaid, and the reason for this is that there's a lot of uncertainty in the world right now regarding what kind of money may or may not be available for infrastructure. At this moment, the Senate is actually voting, the cloture vote, on the bipartisan bill. I'm following that in the other window here. And there may or may not be money in there for lead service line replacement, and that money may or may not be available for doing the lead service line inventory that has to be done before you begin the replacement. So we don't know what, if any, federal dollars there might be to pay for the lead service line inventory, but we do assume that if there are grant dollars out there six months or a year or two years from now to do the actual replacements, we'll be in a stronger position to compete for those dollars if we have the inventory done in a timely fashion. So the idea here is, should we get a grant later that could reimburse for the inventory, that actually could pay for the inventory, then we could reimburse the ARPA Fund for the portion that was used for the lead service line inventory. But we don't know right now whether that will happen, and if it does happen, we don't know when it would happen. Is that a fair enough explanation?
Yeah, to that point, may I follow up briefly, Madam Chair? Specifically, thank you. Specifically, Vic, what I really want to know is that any repayment or any more debt service CBU picks up, I don't, this is helpful, and I'm glad that we're able to do this, but I do not want this to negatively impact rate players moving forward, since we do have some bonds and some other initiatives and some plans for maintenance, as you know. So that's really what I was getting at. I just don't want to say anything where it's going to increase rates in order to help. And I know that's not the plan now, but that's kind of planting that seed, yes.
Yeah, that's not the plan. And when we talk about lead service lines, we're actually talking about two unfunded federal mandates. One is to do the inventory, and one is to replace the pipes. And those pipes have to be replaced ultimately all the way up to the customers' homes. So we've got some pretty tough road to travel here with lead service line replacement, and it's only beginning to firm up just a little bit. You know, with council's help, this money will really give us a leg up on any kind of future money there may be for lead service line replacement. One thing it really will do for us is, when our current rate case is complete, and I hope it'll be soon, but when the current rate case is complete and we start moving ahead with our expanded water main replacement program, we can take advantage of the lead service line inventory to prioritize areas where we know there are lead service lines, because when you replace the water main, you have to replace all the service lines. So if we've got a portion of the town where we know there are a lot of lead service lines, if we replace those mains first, we can replace service lines along with replacing the mains. So we can include that along with the condition of the pipe, the number of main breaks, water quality issues, and all the other things. Neighborhoods that have a lot of lead service lines have old mains, because it's old pipe. So there's a tendency for these things to kind of be in the same location. So we really appreciate council's consideration of this item. It will help us move along on this large mandate.
Okay, thank you for that, deeper clarity. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Thank you. And Councilmember Rollin, I believe?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I had a question concerning the $175,000 for grants to local arts and cultural groups to foster recovery. My question concerns how that would be dispersed, who decides, and what is the criteria?
That is ESD, who is in charge of that program, and Alex couldn't be here tonight. I will take a stab at it. I believe they will try and set up something similar to the CARES Act funding that was distributed to local businesses in the last year. And they came up with a, and Alex can clarify on the 18th, if I'm wrong, or we can email you if my understanding is not quite right. But you may recall that there was an outside group actually looking at the amounts that might be appropriate and whether the businesses were solvent enough that they were going to be able to use the funds and recover. So I'm guessing that we will probably use another approach like that. I don't know if we'll use an outside group or not, and they had a very systematic way of evaluating the organizations that they were making grants to and why they were making them for the purpose that was requested. So I believe that's. So I believe that's what they will probably do. They will probably solicit them too, which is, I, I'm sure they will. That's how they did it the last round. People were given an application and then they submitted them and they were evaluated.
I see. Yes, they've been through this before, so I understand probably how it would go. Thank you for that, for that answer.
Thank you. Additional questions? If not, I have one. May we go back to the utilities, Mr. Kelson, if you'd like to pop back in, please? And actually, maybe this is a Ms. Guthrie question. All right, so if I'm understanding correctly, this is considered a grant, we'll go to work on the inventory, and it's possible that we will reimburse funds at some point if we get additional federal money for that, correct?
Correct.
So I think I heard one of you say that that, maybe this is Mr. Underwood's question. It goes back into the ARPA Fund that we created, right?
That's correct.
All right, given that it, it's sort of back in play, are there any special rules that apply to how we spend that money?
It would, it would still fall under the rules for the ARPA Funds.
So it, it's the same thing, we still have to spend it within a certain amount of time, we have certain purposes it could be allocated for and so forth?
Correct.
Okay, got it. Thank you. Any other questions? Going once, going twice? Okay, seeing none. Are we ready for a due pass recommendation?
Are we going to the public?
Oh, wait, yes, thank you.
Thank you. Yes.
Yes, let us do so. And for members of the public who wish to comment on this, please either use the raise hand function in Zoom or type a message into chat and our meeting host, Mr. Lucas, will help us call on those, call on those individuals. If there is, if there are more than one person, is more than one person on a single device, please let us know that as well so we can ensure everybody has an opportunity to speak. Mr. Lewis, Mr. Lucas, what do you see?
Don't see any raised hands at the moment, so we might want to give it just one more second. I only see a few folks on the meeting that aren't staff members, so perhaps just a couple of seconds here. I do not see anyone.
Final call for public comments? And with that, let's come back to council for any additional questions or comments. Councilmember Rolla?
Yes, I did have one, and it was, I'm trying to find it. I think it was $260,000 for cleaning and maintenance of Switchyard Park Restrooms and Facilities. Is that to be done, is that to be contracted out to private firms?
I'll break that down. 250,000 is for the outside contract that Parks has for the various facilities, patrolling those. 10,000 is specifically slated for the maintenance of public restrooms to assist them in those pre, pre-hours and post-hours, keep them clean, keep them open, keep them available. Paul McDevitt is also on the call if you want additional, if you have additional questions.
This is $10,000 per year?
It's $10,000 for the rest of this year, yes.
The rest of this year?
Yes.
Ms. McDevitt, did you want to add anything?
I would just like to add, for particular, the restroom, that is an addendum to our partnership agreement with Centerstone. And they have been very quick to respond, to pull another crew together for us. So it, it gives us a crew that is present, that can keep the restrooms clean as a public health measure, and then also keep them open and functioning and cut down on, on some of the vandalism.
Okay, so unless I'm mistaken, so Mr. Underwood, you said $10,000 for restroom maintenance or cleaning, and that leaves $250,000 for security? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that is for the, the remainder of the year for Switchyard Park?
Correct, yes. We have a security contract with an outside security, private security company. And what that is giving us is actually 24-hour full coverage in Switchyard Park. The spring and summer has been very, very busy with a lot of park visitors. There has been an uptick in vandalism, in behavior challenges that have pulled our regular Switchyard Park staff away from their daily duties, which is to maintain the park and keep the spray pad functioning and get ready for large events and all of that. So we found it necessary. We were also getting a lot of reports of vandalisms in the morning when the crew would show up to do their maintenance. There would have been overnight incidents in the park. So this, this measure gives us around-the-clock coverage and allows our, our staff to do their jobs and, you know, more eyes on the park and reports, and we can respond a lot quicker.
I see. So they do patrols throughout the night?
Correct. And this particular company has QR codes throughout the park. And so they are able to check in with their QR code with a pretty elaborate reporting system that we can review. They will report on lights out, perhaps. We don't, you know, we're, we don't have staff out there at 3:00 in the morning. We have a bank of lights go out, we get that information. But also to move people along who are in the park after hours, as you all know, our park hours. Parks are closed from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. So again, it gives a presence and they are circulating throughout the park and down the Beeline Trail to monitor that.
So they do that themselves if there is, do they, I assume they don't carry firearms?
No, they, they do not. They, they use their phones to check in with their QR codes. We are in, you know, daily contact with BPD. There's a good relationship there. And again, it's, it's just to put the eyes and the ears so that, again, when they are there, when we do have staff there, it, it's just a support for that, but good communication. Some of the employees of this particular company actually provide security for Beacon and some of the other social service agencies. So they're in that, that group and, and actually working with some of the same incidents and behaviors in that. So it's working out quite well. It's providing, as I said, I can't emphasize enough, allowing our staff to do their jobs and keeping the park maintained and opened because we have just hundreds and hundreds of visitors seven days a week.
Okay, thank, thank you for that information.
I was muted, sorry. Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Thank you. I wanted to ask the administration and also the new superintendent of schools about reporting back to us about these investments. Certainly, you know, some of these things such as, you know, increasing landlord participation in Section 8 programs, the BHA Affordable Housing Programs, the job training. These are all things that, that I think we should hear back about, you know, to see how our investment did. And also from the, from the school district, I think, Mr. Houseman, you said that, that this was actually part of the plan, was to report back to us. So I just wanted to lay that out there.
The plan was to gather data, but I would be more than happy because we'll know our vaccination rates as soon as school starts. So we'll be able to then kind of chart the growth of those vaccination rates. I'll be glad to either send that to your reporter, come talk to you for a couple hours, it's up to you.
Very good. And Ms. Guthrie is there or Mr. Griffin?
Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we're gonna make sure that we're looking at all the data as well. We want these programs to succeed for all of us.
Great, especially important since we, we do have additional ARPA Funds and we want to, you know, see if we're heading in the right direction with some of these investments. Thank you.
Absolutely. You know, this is a team effort, right?
Thank you. Additional questions? Or comments? Councilmember Sim?
Thank you. I just do have a comment. I do intend to support this appropriation ordinance. And I don't think any of us would say that what is being proposed is perfect and going to solve all of our issues. But I think many of us would agree that it is a good and intentional start in use of some of these one-time funding with regard to community investments. I welcome Councilmember Piedmont Smith's comments about reporting back. One of the most important things of getting report and feedback on progresses or lack thereof is that we will have at least two more rounds with regard to budgeting and then early 2023, I think, investments with the rest of ARPA Funds. So that'd be a real good gauge for us to see how things are really working and, and just how the programs are going. I also know that with four major categories of investment that has been proposed, and again, this isn't all encompassing, but I do know there's been a lot of input received from this council with regard to these buckets, if you are, these four categories. City staff has had input as well as the public. So I think this is a good start. I think the administration and city staff deserve credit, in particularly for an opportunity for us to have a more immediate use that is equitable and sustainable as we move forward with this portion of the funding. So I plan to support this appropriation ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Sandberg?
Thank you. I am also in support of this and the good start that it's going to give us. And while we are offering funding for the MCCSC schools to incentivize more individuals in the community getting their vaccinations, may I just use this platform again to encourage everyone, private sector businesses as well as the city, to think of other creative ways that we can get more of our people vaccinated here in Monroe County and in Bloomington. It is so critical to getting back to normal to where we don't need ARPA funding in the future. So thanks to everybody for putting on their thinking caps and doing everything they can to get those rates up. Thanks.
Thank you. Additional comments or questions? Councilmember Smith?
I, I appreciate the ordinance, and I, I also think it's a good start, and I'm going to support it as well. The only caveat I have, and I, I've said this before, and I don't, I just mean, mean it in a economic, financial senses. So there's 3.35 million appropriated for this, and there's still a lot of change left on the table that is, is yet unallocated, and some of it's going to go for replacement revenue. And, and I understand that. But, but certainly, I wish that more of the funds would be for programs and so that the more of the expenditures go that way. And I realize I don't know all the ins and outs of the replacement revenue. But when I, when I look at it, I, I just wish there was more funds that would go out to the programs that, that were, that are listed here and that are really a good start. So, thank you.
Thank you. Additional comments? If not, I'll close this out. Just my thanks to the administration for this plan and also to everyone who shared feedback along the way. I, as I was reading this over tonight, I was thinking about it. And one thing that struck me is the many interdependent issues that we're trying to respond to. We are trying to respond to issues of housing, we're trying to respond to COVID, we're trying to understand to the need for job training and supporting people economically. And I think the plan that, and I know that many of us were tugging at the administration's sleeve on all of those different issues. And again, I, I don't look for perfection, but I, in this plan, I'm impressed that a lot of those issues seem to be addressed and considered. And I thank you for that, and I'll be pleased to support this. And with that, is there, I don't see any other comment. Is there a due pass recommendation?
Move to pass.
Second.
Thank you. We have a motion in a second. I'm just going to go left to right on my screen as I see people. Councilmember Sandberg?
Yes.
Wait, sorry. Councilmember Sim?
Yes.
Councilmember Rolla?
Yes.
Councilmember Piedmont Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Smith?
Yes.
Councilmember Rolla?
Yes.
And Councilmember Scambalory, yes as well. That is a recommendation due pass of 7-0. Is there any other business this evening? I don't have any other on my agenda. Okay, with that, we will be reconvening many of us in person for the first time next Wednesday, August 4th, for the public hearing on annexation ordinances that will be here in council chambers and also hybrids. Mr. Lucas, is there anything else?
That, that was the same reminder I had planned to give, just a reminder that that starts at 3:00 PM and not 6:00, 6:30, which is the normal time. So 3:00 PM next Wednesday, we certainly, for members of the public that are watching and plan to attend, we would encourage you to participate via Zoom. You will be able to comment and participate in the meeting via Zoom. We will have seating in the chambers spaced out for social distancing. So there will be limited capacity and we'll have overflow seating available. But just to, to make sure that we can accommodate everyone, please, if, if anyone's watching and plans to attend next week, please consider attending via Zoom.
Thank you. Okay, and with that, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
In a second? That's a motion in a second. Thank you, everybody. Have a good evening.